Good evening and welcome to the special city council meeting. This is Thursday, December 6, 2018. It is 6:30 PM. It's not that funny. If you have not already done so, if I could get you to silence your cell phones or any other devices that may make noise. Madam Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Mayor Protam Janelle Osbourne?
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle?
Here. It's not on the agenda, but I've asked a friend of mine, Pastor Darrell Tallis, to come up and give an invocation to us. If you'll please stand, remove your hats if you have one on.
Would you please bow and pray with me? Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we invoke your presence upon this gathering tonight. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to come here in unison, in one accord. Lord, we ask that you just guide those who are in positions of authority. We ask that you guide their minds, guide their hearts, guide their spirits, that the things that they come up with tonight, Lord, will be good for this whole community. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that everyone who is here, Lord, we ask that you just help us all, Lord, to look to you for guidance. Help us, Lord, to be civil towards one another. Help us to always be mindful that we can either stand together or fall apart. Lord, we ask these things in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. If you'll please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Consent calendar. Item number one, review the need to continue the local emergency proclamation. Item number two, adopt a resolution declaring the results of the consolidated general election to be held in Lompoc 2018. Can I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as written.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Favor, yeah. Please vote. Yeah, I know. Okay, that's passes 5-0. Okay. Janelle, you're up.
And now we would like to present our outgoing mayor, Bob Lingle, with recognition for his service to the City of Lompoc. Mayor, will you join me at the podium? You've been so used to standing on this side of the microphone for years. And speaking of that, just so that you all understand how long Bob Lingle's been giving back to our community, he first began serving on the Planning Commission in 2006 and served through 2008. In 2008, he then decided to run for city council and was successful and joined city council and was on city council until 2014. And then in 2014, he made a bid for mayor, and we have had him as our mayor through today. So, thank you for your service, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your mentoring. I hope that those that are interested in local government who want to serve will reach out, have a conversation with Mr. Bob Lingle about serving and ways to get involved because he has a great deal of experience and information and insight. So, thank you for your service. I really appreciate it. He's one of the reasons I got involved in politics, so it's all your fault. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, I made a note because I can't forget certain people. First of all, the public. I can tell you how absolutely it's been an honor to serve the community for the past, actually, 12 years. It has been my honor and my privilege to serve as your mayor, as your council member, and a planning commissioner. Actually, my family. I'm going to thank my family for their support, putting up with me, delayed vacations, time schedules and everything. I could not have done it without the support of my family and staff. Thank you, thank you, thank you. They make our jobs so easy. We're up here, but they really do all the work. So, thank you very much. The staff in this city is absolutely fantastic. Many people have asked me what I want to do once I leave office. Well, I have many things that I want to do, but I just want to give you a list of certain things that my wife has made for me. Replace the burned-out light bulbs that have been burnt out for the last two weeks. Wash your car. Pigeons have dumped on it. Cut the lawn. And most importantly, gas up the motor home because you've ran out of excuses. That's just a partial list of the things that my wife has made for me. So, she's going to keep me really busy. I'm going to miss this job. It is very, very bittersweet that I'm leaving. I've enjoyed it, I've hated it, but I've enjoyed it more than I've hated it. So, thank you very much to you and the community for always being around. Those of you who voted for me, those of you who didn't vote for me, I appreciate all of you because without the democratic process we have, we would not have this city, this county, this state, this union. So, it's because of you that everything is great in this country. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stacy Haddon. I'm the city clerk. Could I have Councilmember Starbuck, Councilmember Vega, and Mayor Janelle Osbourne, please stand up? Do you have anybody that wants to stand with you? No? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Janelle Osbourne.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
That I will support.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution.
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
the Constitution of the State of California.
that I will support the laws and policies
the laws and policies.
of the City of Lompoc
of the City of Lompoc.
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully
and that I will well and faithfully.
discharge the duties
discharge the duties.
upon which I am about to enter. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Councilmember Vega, can I have you sign, please?
I gotta get my better pen. I'd sign it too, then. Yeah, I'd sign it, well.
This is your certificate.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
This is yours.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Now, it hasn't been a tradition, but I want to start a tradition, to ceremoniously pass the gavel to the new mayor. Janelle, congratulations. I know you're going to do well.
[Inaudible].
You've got a great council here. You've got a great public. So, congratulations. Serve the public well.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you like me to vote on that side if we need to vote, given that's where my... Have you switched it already? Awesome. Hey, I was just trying to accommodate not having to get up on a ladder, but I didn't even notice. So, that being done, I thank you. Thank you to your service, former mayor Bob Lingle. I really appreciate it. And I'd like to reconvene city council and have the clerk call to order. Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osbourne?
Here.
So, we have an item of new business. Because of the resulting vacancy in the seat, council is going to discuss possible action and process to fill the midterm council vacancy. And our new city attorney, Jeff Malavi, will now present the recommendation.
Good evening, council and new mayor Osbourne. That is correct. The reason that we have this item tonight is because the election of Mayor Osbourne to the mayor's seat does leave a vacancy in Mayor Osbourne's prior council seat. What state law says when there is a vacancy on the council is that within 60 days, the council is required to either appoint a person to fill the vacancy or to call a special election to let the citizens of the community vote to fill the vacancy. In either case, the person who fills the vacancy will serve out the remainder of Councilmember Osbourne's prior term, which ends in December 2020. As you all know, we recently switched to district elections in Lompoc, and so a question may have arisen in some people's minds about whether the person that replaces Councilmember Osbourne needs to be from any particular district. The answer is no, because that seat was an at-large seat. The person that replaces the vacant, that fills the vacancy can be from any district in Lompoc. But when the November 2020 election takes place, the person that runs for that seat will need to be, anyone who runs for that seat will need to be from District 1. Now, if the council decides to fill the vacancy by a special election, the government code states that the election must be held at the next regularly scheduled election date, that is at least 114 days after the council calls the election. Because this year, the California Legislature decided to eliminate the June election date for all years to come, that means that if we call a special election, that election cannot be held until November 5, 2019, which is nearly a year from now. Additionally, if we were to call a special election, we've contacted the county who normally would run the election, and they have told us that they, at this point, don't have any plans to hold any elections in 2019. Therefore, we could not receive the, we wouldn't get the advantage of consolidating our special election with the county. If we could consolidate the election with the county, it would still cost the city, according to their estimates, about $150,000. But since we're probably, we wouldn't be able to consolidate with the county, the cost would be even more than that because the city would need to conduct the election entirely on our own. So, that's the special election option. The appointment option, the state law simply says that the council can, within 60 days, appoint a person to fill the vacancy, and it does not give any details about that. So, what that means is it is entirely within the city council's discretion how you would like to do that appointment process if you do choose to appoint. You could appoint someone tonight, as long as they meet all the qualifications for office, which is being at least 18 years old, being a registered voter, and being a resident of Lompoc. Or you could create a process, as we have done before in Lompoc, where the council solicits applications from people in the community who want to be a candidate to fill the vacancy. They submit an application form that the council decides on. That application form can be one that we've used in the past, or it could be a new application form that you want to create with whatever questions you would like to ask on that application form. And then you could set a period of time in which members of the community could submit their applications. They'd be received by city staff. And then you would set a day to conduct interviews, if you wanted to have interviews. Don't need to have interviews. And then select a person to appoint. It's really entirely within your discretion on what type of process you would like to use, how short or long the process will be. It's all up to you, as long as the appointment is made within 60 days. And 60 days is February 4, 2019. We have here in the staff report a couple proposals. There is, if you wanted to appoint, it could be done in an expedited fashion, and we could propose dates tonight for getting that done before the holidays, before City Hall closes. The last day would be December 21st, that City Hall is open and that we could hold a Or we have a more drawn-out, longer process that's listed on page three of the staff report in the seven steps that you see there. And those are just examples. Like I said, you can come up with any process that you would like. Another thing that the council will eventually need to decide on, they can decide on it tonight or could decide on it at a later date, up to the day of the meeting, if needed, to interview the candidates, if needed, is the process by which we're going to vote on, to fill the vacancy. Again, if you choose to appoint someone, it could be a normal process where a motion is made after you do the interviews to appoint someone, and then if that motion receives three votes, that person is appointed. Or it could be a process like the one that was used the last time that this occurred in 2014, where there was a multi-round system and council members received multiple votes in each one of those rounds. I think you were all present on that day, so you will all remember that. Or any other type of voting system that you might create or come up with that you think should be used. So, those are all the things that we would need to decide on, not necessarily tonight, but those are the things that would need to be decided if we choose to do an appointment process tonight. That does conclude the staff report, so I'm available for questions, and the rest of staff is available for questions as well.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for our attorney? Seeing none, we will move this to public comment. So, we will open the floor to public comment. If you have never been to council before, please come to the microphone, state your name, and you have three minutes to give us input about how you'd like to see this process occur. This is your representation and your opportunity to give us input on that process.
I was here when the last appointment process happened, and it was not, it was not an open and transparent process. And I believe very strongly that whatever process is going to be used needs to be decided in an open forum like this. No more, you know, you get two ballots for your favorite person and then somebody doesn't vote a ballot. So, let's make it open, transparent, fair, and get the best qualified and interested person to represent the community until the next election.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dwayne Homdahl, I was here too when that last appointment was in '14, and it wasn't as open as it should have been. I think the way I've heard tonight, that each one of you are going to have to do it, you could interview each one of the candidates, and the decision is you want them separate or with, well, I have the council, all the members who are asking to be appointed. So, I think what you heard tonight, the attorney's got some good ideas, and you sit down and look at, I think the four of you could do a good job of appointing a person to fill that fifth spot, and it's sure going to save $75,000, $150,000. I know you don't have it, so let's do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Al Thompson, I've been in town since 1964. I prepared something, a statement that, after the last few minutes, I'm not sure how much I should read of it, but I mean no harm, no insults or anything. It's just my thinking, and I would like to read it, and I would like to say hello to the mayor and the honorable council people present tonight, and thank you for this process. The United States is considered to be a democracy. One of the fundamental principles underlying the Constitution, aka fundamental principle of democracy, is popular sovereignty. This is the consent of the people. Free elections and other forms of civic participation are essential to democracy. Webster defines gerrymandering as to divide or arrange into political units to give special advantage to one group. This leads one to believe that gerrymandering is a hindrance in a democracy, an attempt to overrule the democratic principle. Flashback, 1952, '53. I spent the last 13 months of the Korean War, about the 38th parallel, in Korea. I was a volunteer. I felt I was serving my country, a democracy. As a war veteran, and I know that there's a veteran sitting up there, too, as a war veteran, there are times when I ponder over how some people elected to public office view their public roles. Do they honor my service to my country's democratic principles? Do they serve their country likewise in civilian attempt? Perhaps their worthiness, their honesty, is revealed in the paths which they choose, the fundamental principles of democracy, or the downward slide of gerrymandering and/or other departures from the consent, or consent of the people. Due process of the people of Lompoc tonight in this chamber is highly relevant. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Osbourne and council members. My name is Lorraine Waldau. My husband and I have been residents and voters in the City of Lompoc since 1989, and I'm here tonight to advocate for an open and inclusive process of application that extends into the new year so that there's a chance to have coverage in the paper and in social media, because it is paramount in these days that we encourage new people to come forward in this application process. The district law that we're going to be totally under in another two years was set up to encourage participation from each of the districts and encourage new people to come forward because the cost of running a district election is less than a city election. So, I encourage you to take that step in the spirit of the law, even though it's not the letter of the law at this moment, and to set up a fair and open process that would encourage participation on this council.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Asher, and I'm a resident of Lompoc. I believe in democracy, too. And I guess, in a democratic way, no matter who the person was, whether I agree with them or they didn't agree with them, seems like if they won the seat for city council and then they won the seat to be a mayor, they should have preference on how they want to do it in about a 45-day period as to whether they want to appoint somebody or how they want to do it. But I certainly don't think it deserves an election, special election. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
My name's Molly Gerald. I'm a resident of the City of Lompoc dating back to 1985. I love this community, as I'm sure we all do in this room, and I am especially mindful of the words that our outgoing mayor just reminded us of, that we do live in a democracy. And even though the city attorney made clear that this appointment is at your discretion, I think it's so important to have a diversity of views and opinions about what our city needs to do next, about what we want to be like in the years ahead, and to give new voices and opportunity to be on the dais with you as you go forward. So, I would just encourage you to allow a process that allows people to come forward and for those of us who reside here and have voted to give you some input about and for those of us who reside here and have voted to give you some input about our opinion too. And thank you for your service and for considering our ideas.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Osborne, city council, citizens of Lompoc. My name's Darrell Tullis. My family has been here since 1981. People like to talk about how long they've been here. I've been here since I retired from the Air Force after 21 years of service. My family is a serving family. I stand here simply to say that in the last two times that this city has had to appoint people to seats, whether it was to replace Mayor DeWes or whether it was to replace Bob Lingle, the process was not done properly, wasn't done fair. And I would simply say, I would go as far as to say, I spoke to Tony Durham after he was appointed and Tony told me that he had been called by members of the council and asked to put his name in and then he was voted in. I would simply say to you, be honest with this public, be honest with yourselves, be honest with all of us. If you already have someone in mind that three of you are going to vote for, don't waste this community's time. Don't do it. If you already have the name, you can do it tonight. Other than that, you're lying to us. Don't do it. And you know that if you know who you're already going to vote for, just go on and get it over with, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Any, I don't know. Anyone else? This is your opportunity. We really do want to hear from you.
Yeah, I'm Kathy Howard. I didn't fill out a yellow sheet. Do you need one later? Okay. And I'm a Lompoc resident and I'm not going to tell you back and forth when I came and came back and all of that. I'm going to really mirror what most of the people here have said and I think you need to do an inclusive process so that we all feel like whoever is appointed came at it in a very fair way. And this longer and more inclusive process seems fair to me and I would very much support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Terry Doughtney. I understand from the previous commenter that somebody has already been picked out. That is not somebody that I am aware of and I don't believe that would be an open and fair process and it would be unfair to the community to appoint somebody without giving us a chance for feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members, members of the public. Congratulations, Mayor Osborne and council members who have been reelected. I would just like to bring a thought to everyone's mind about why we even have district elections. And that is because we were facing a lawsuit from attorneys in Santa Barbara who wanted to open up district elections here so that Latinos and members of minority communities could be better represented, was the theory. And because we were given instruction from our former city attorney that it was unwise to challenge the lawsuit threat that we should just go ahead and go forward with the district elections to save us money and time. That was a decision that was made. So I just would like to say that perhaps we should consider putting a minority or considering a minority in a higher position who may apply for this position on the city council for that very reason why we have district elections and why all of you voted for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I don't have a yellow form and I'll be brief as possible. I've been here since 1974. Your honor, the mayor, Vic, Dirk, Mr. Mosby, we should have a open and transparent process. And as a gentleman so elegantly said, maybe it should be someone that has already previously ran for the council and someone of color. Lompoc has become a very diverse city and I think all the voices need the opportunity to be heard. So I'm asking for that transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Osborne, and I'm also addressing the city council. My name is Charlotte Reynolds and I work for Macy's Corporation. And I would also myself like to see some transparency. I would like to see, like the other gentleman just mentioned, about a little bit more of a cultural, ethnic background. It seems to me, since I've lived in this city off and on, I'm going to say it and I'm going to be real, I'd like to see some blacks, okay? I'd like to see them get voted in. It's needed. And as far as voting is concerned and like a previous gentleman mentioned about if you already have individuals that you've already selected or nominated or who you want in the position, in all fairness, I think there should be a vote. I know how the game works. I know how politics works. I know how things work in my corporation that I work for. And sometimes it's who you know. And who you know, guess what? You get appointed. So transparency with all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Osborne and city council members, thank you for your service. I'd like to say thank you to everyone who's gotten up to speak tonight. I think we all notice that it's all on the same line, that we do want transparency, we do want the opportunity for people, other people to be considered for city council. As we all know, this midterm election that just occurred, things have changed. We are looking, we are paying attention, not just nationally, statewide, but locally, right here in our city that we all love. We want to have the transparency, the honesty, and the opportunity for people in our community to have this opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you.
I've been here since June. I don't know what's going on yet, but as somebody coming fresh into this, allow me to suggest that, I don't know how things work here, but I'm concerned that, you know, we have a Constitution of the United States. I heard that reference. It talks about representative government. I think, I think it's very important. Janelle was elected to the council, she was elected to mayor. I would love to see an open election, but if you're really going to just appoint someone, it seems to me that maybe her input, that maybe she ought to nominate a few for you to vote on. That would be a suggestion as a compromise, prefer an open election, but I'm still learning how things work here in Lompoc and right now I have some concerns because I've been hearing stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chance before I close public comment. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and we'll bring it back to council for discussion. And I'd like to suggest that we need two decisions to start with, one either being whether we have a special election or an appointment process, and then if we choose the appointment process, that would be the second discussion and what that process looks like. So council member Starbuck.
Thank you. I'd like to hear the stories too that lady was referring to and I'm curious as to who you three have already picked out.
I know.
I'd like to kind of go back here and talk about what staff has recommended. I like the timeline. I like the way that it's laid out and I think that it's a very transparent, as last time we did basically the same thing, type of a format. The one part of it that I find a little fault in is on item five on the December 18th to the 31st where the open period for public to submit applications is city hall's going to be closed for a majority of that time. So is there some way we could follow this timeline but still accept applications?
The intent was, it'd be hard to drop it off because the doors would be closed, but they could do a mail-in as long as it was postmarked, the idea was postmarked by the 31st, so we would have the mail. Once we come back, when the city hall opens on the 2nd, we would then have anybody that had submitted some, because some might submit right away, others might take some more time. So by the 2nd, we'd have the ability to open up, review it, and compile it for the council.
Well, on the timeline, Mr. Throop, it shows us receiving them on the 2nd.
Well, we could, we can adjust, these were, yeah, I apologize. We could change that to the 3rd and the 4th or the 4th and the 5th, you know, it's, that was probably a little too quick.
No, I appreciate, I just, this was the only thing that I found that would be probably a glitch in the whole process that you have here. I don't know if everybody in the audience has seen this, but it was available outside. And it lays out a lot of timelines, it works around the schedule, it works with some of the items that the council has at that time going on. I mean, I would like to go ahead and adopt this, but maybe just that small change on number six from January 2nd to, you know, January 3rd to January 5th or something.
Does anybody have a calendar with them? What is that, Friday, that we come back? Is that the 4th?
We actually, we will be back in, the office is open on the 2nd because the 1st is a Tuesday, so it's closed. So Wednesday is the 2nd, Thursday is the 4th, or...
3rd and then Friday is the 4th.
Friday is the 4th.
So I would support, get a second to council member Starbuck's motion with adjusting the deadline to the final day you could walk it in on January 2nd and deliver them to council on the 4th.
That would be fine with me.
Okay. So any discussion on this matter? Bye. No discussion?
I do have something.
Yes, council member Vega.
I think fiscally it doesn't make any sense for all of us timeframe-wise, it doesn't take, make any sense as far as the special election, so it only makes fiscal sense and timeline sense because the majority is so important to the council for making good, solid decisions that we move forward with that appointment process. And I think that I would support this also for transparency. And again, I'd like to thank everyone that came to the podium. I can see that if someone had a, someone they wanted already, I don't know that there's a consensus on it because I don't know about it, okay? So I'd like to have someone that would be balanced and open. We keep bringing up the diversity end of it, you know, sure, we would like all walks of life and creed and color to come in here. I'd like to thank District 2 for voting for me, even though we represent the entire city. That process was not something we dreamed up, it was something that came, it was litigated, and we were told that we were, it was not going to be fiscally responsible to go after them and go after their vote and change the district elections. I have constantly been asked to run on a diverse platform, which I understand why district elections were put in place, but I, I didn't want to do that because I think that the most qualified person regardless should actually come up here and sit up here and put in the time that we put in, and if they're willing to put in the time, then they're the right person. But I do understand the diverse, the diversity that's needed in Lompoc. I don't agree with the whole process about it, but I think that I would encourage anybody regardless of race, creed, and color, apply for this process. That would be the most transparent way to do it. And then we'll just by majority because we were voted in as your representative, so I think that that's the most transparent process we could put out there. I think that what happens sometimes is, yeah, it's not the candidate that you wanted, so you're against the process, but that's the best we can do. So again, I would support that motion also, and those are my comments.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is that we do an appointment process and that we follow the timeline provided by staff with an adjustment on item five, that we extend the application window to January 2nd and that the council receive the submissions on the 4th with a special meeting on January 8th for us to go through the process. It lines out the opportunity for us to have a discussion about what that application form looks like at our December 18th meeting and I would submit for any other discussion. Other than that, I'm, I think we should, should vote if there's no other discussion. Yes, council member Vega.
Also, since, I don't see these as separate agendized items, unless we're taking them separately as far as the process, as far as by majority vote, or are we going to go back and forth? I think there was two folds, so maybe you could clarify that, whether we're going to do this in two separate motions.
Sure. I think, I think the first motion should be voted on, which is just how the process is going to be to go through an appointment process. And then we can reopen the discussion if we so desire this evening to have the discussion about what the process is for voting while we do that appointment process at the December 8th meeting, I mean, the January 8th meeting. Or we could consider that and have that as part of the discussion on December 18th when we look at the application and have the conversation there.
And I wanted that clarified for the public so they understand when we vote on something, it's not all bundled, or I was asking if it was all bundled together. So we're clarifying that.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that clarification. So again, the motion on the floor is just dealing with what the timeframe and what the process initially will be for going through an appointment process, and then we will have a second discussion about what the actual process on December, on January 8th will be. So hearing no more discussion, let's vote. And that passes for zero. So the second part of the discussion is on January 8th, when we go to appoint someone, do we want to go through an interview process in person as council? Do we just want to convene and discuss the applicants and make an appointment? And once we decide whether we're going to interview publicly and have a discussion, do we want a single vote per? Do we want a round of elimination? How do we want to proceed? So I'll open the floor to that discussion.
I think public comment, if I could...
Council member Vega.
Thank you so much. Okay, jumped in. I think that public comment has said that if you want us to interview individually and then bring them out here and then they can, on public comment, you, you hear a second interview, or I'd like to know if people prefer just letting everyone and all the applicants come to the, to the microphone and we make our judgments based on their presentation in front of everyone.
So you're asking for public comment again? Is that what you're requesting?
Well, I wanted, maybe we can, yes, I'd like to have some input there so that we can, so they can know that they're part of the process. I think as far as do we want individual, private interviews, which we can do, but also they get to have a secondary interview on public comment. I think that's how the normal process was anyway.
I'd ask for clarification from our city attorney about conducting private interviews. I believe this process to be transparent actually needs to be in city hall at the dais and, and no private interviews with the candidates, but I'll ask for clarification.
The law requires the interviews to be public.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you. And I wanted to do that for the public so we could understand what the process is.
Sure. Any more comments before I open the comments to the public regarding the actual interview process? Seeing none, if anyone has an opinion about the day-of process and you'd like to share it, I'll open public comment. Seeing no one rise, we'll return the discussion to council and I'm open to suggestions, a motion, or that we continue this to the discussion on December 8th, 10th, when we have the application form. December 18th when we have the application form. You both pushed it at the same time.
I have one.
Councilmember Vega.
Thank you so much, okay? Sorry, Dirk. Anyway. I think that the public interview process would be the way that I would actually propose that we go. I think that's what the question is. It's very simple. And I think you were just trying to beat me out on that one, okay? But I think that's, we had already spoken about it. So, I don't know if there's another way of misunderstanding it, but that's what I would propose.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
One of the things I maybe would like to suggest here is, is part of this application that we just approved is that we will submit questions to the attorney and staff, like most immediately, so they can be included. But I think there would also be a section on this application where the applicant could actually address the council. And that way, you know, everybody has the same four questions and everybody will have the ability to speak on their own. I think that would be important. The other part of it too is, is with four people to have a single vote, I think that it would be better if we did do the multiple, two votes per person, giving a total of eight votes out on the number of applicants.
So, I'm hearing that you would like portion of the 2014 methodology incorporated in that we submit questions to staff to review and the attorney to review as part of the written application and also submit questions to staff to review that we then ask the candidates the day of and they are all aware of that? Or is that the same four questions?
Well, it would be the same four questions. I mean, it's here December 7th to 11th. Part of the council's duties here is to create a question, submit it to staff. But I think that it's imperative that when somebody's applying for an office, that they don't have to fall into the mold of the questions that we've created. I think they should have the time to express for themselves why they would like to be on the council. And it could be a very big selling point for them and for us. And so, that would be part of the application that I think we should include in here, which isn't listed.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Throop.
Yeah, the intent, sort of the questions were to be part of the form. And then during, if you have an interview process, you would have other questions. But it would be written questions, or a question and then a written response. So, you could see it, if the public can see it and read what it is, so they can understand where a person's coming from, I guess. But then you'd have other interview questions on top of that.
Councilmember Vega.
It's a little confusing. Maybe you could break that down and say exactly who's writing the questions, who's asking the questions. Is it the applicant writing the questions? Is it the council writing the questions? Is the staff writing the questions? I think the public probably got a little confused here. I was confused.
Sure. So, I'll read what item 2 of the process was, which is from December 7th to December 11th, council members create one question each, which would then be reviewed by the city attorney to assure appropriate language. From the 12th to the 14th of December, the staff creates and finishes the proposed application form. That form would come back before council on the December 18th council meeting for us to review, finalize, and then that would be put on the website. That would be what the applicant would fill out. It would be a public document. It would be what we would initialize the interview process with. What staff is indicating through our city manager is that there would be an additional layer of questions that could be asked at the interview process if we so decided. Or we could just depend on the written application questions being spoken to from the applicant and maybe ask the applicant to add an additional statement as to why they should be appointed.
Thanks for clarifying. Also, maybe if you would, we could clarify on the two votes each. We had a process from which each council member had two votes each on that process. I'd like to clarify, and let's ask what the benefits are versus a majority vote. And is it meant to break a tie, or is it meant to simplify the process or not?
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, the reason that you, I would like to go with the two votes. A fictitious number would be eight applicants. If we only voted once, two people voted for applicant number one, that applicant's going to win the seat without a majority. Does this make sense? It would be...
No.
Half of the council would select the one. Where if there was the ability to put an extra vote on top, then it would double the numbers out on it, where it would become a more, a solid majority.
Actually, I don't believe that a vote of two could put, but I'll let our city attorney...
When I was saying one, if we did one.
Right. If we did one, that would create, but either way, it will still need to be a majority. So, it would have to be a vote of three. So, I would let city attorney or city manager describe the difference between the single vote methodology versus the two per.
I think the best way to describe it is if each council member got one vote and the, we went through the round of interviews and then you all voted and two, or one candidate got two votes, and then another candidate got one vote, and another candidate got one vote, that would not be adequate to appoint someone because they need at least three votes of the council to appoint someone.
Correct. And then your other possibility is if we have a very large pool of applicants, we may need to utilize two votes per to get to a second round in order to reduce the selection process. So, it has multiple purposes. I would like to also add that if we go with the two votes per, that each vote be utilized and each vote be utilized for separate and different individuals rather than pooling a vote for a single individual.
And if I could, that was one of my questions because if a council member, each one of us had two votes, I wanted to make sure that someone could withhold a vote or not. You know what I'm saying though? So, it would, it would kind of skew the intent, I think, if you understand what I'm saying here, okay? If I'm being clear, anyway. And I want to make sure that we're doing this as clear as possible because I think that all of us are looking for the best candidate that can be as balanced as possible, not swayed one way or the other. And I think the goal here is to move Lompoc forward, not backwards. I think all of us here are looking to make this city a little bit better.
So, that being said, the discussion that I'm hearing is that we have an application that has four questions on it that the applicant fills out, that is then utilized as part of their presentation in public to us about why they want to be appointed, that we each have two votes, and those two votes should be for two separate candidates, and that both votes be utilized. Any other parameters that I've heard? Councilmember Vega.
Again, I'd like to ask the city attorney also, within his experience on this voting process, if it's easily understood as far as legally. I know you're not there to make the decision here, but as far as transparency, or is there some convoluted type misunderstood caveat that would come up, that maybe we're not referencing? Because in the event of, where hypothetically we get eight or 10 candidates or applicants, but what if we only had four? Does it work the same way?
Well, I...
Sorry, I put you on the spot there.
I can't say that I am a game theorist because you kind of have to get into...
No, I got you. I got you.
...stuff to think of, all the possibilities. But if there were only four candidates and each of you had two votes that you had to use for different people, would it just be your intention that the person that got the most votes would be the one that's appointed? Or would there, would it be, because in 2014, we did, you know, two rounds. You each voted on all of the candidates in the first round. And then I believe it was, the process was supposed to be that the person, any person that received at least two votes would go on to the next round, and then you do a similar voting process.
So...
You could do it that way again, or you could just have one round where you each have two votes, and then the candidate that gets the most votes wins the seat.
So, the process in 2014 actually was, we, if the individual got three votes, they could then immediately have a motion to be put forward. But the first round was two votes and the goal was each vote go to a separate person to help eliminate because at that point, we had 12 candidates that were being processed. So, it was utilized as a round of elimination to get to the next process. So, I think that this may be something we may need to have a second discussion on once we know the number of applicants rather than making it an immediate determination right now. And I don't know if we can wait that morning to make that decision because if, again, we only have four applicants at that point, we may or may not need the two-vote process.
Well, I would caution you against making the decision on that morning because it seems like it's something that could get very complex right before the interviews start. And then the, actually, then the applicants would not have the advantage of knowing what the process is before they arrive that day.
Okay.
But it is something that you can do, if that's what you wanted to do. Another thing that we could do, if you wanted to know the number of applicants before you make this decision, is to call a special meeting at some point prior, between January 4th and January 8th, because that's when you will know how many applicants you have.
So, that would leave one, that would just leave the 7th because the others are on the, unless you want to do a weekend, we could do that too. But Monday is the 7th.
Councilmember Mosby.
And why don't we make a simple process if we have more than four, we still right now, and then you do the two votes. If you have less than four, then you go down to the simple one vote. And if you don't get the majority on that, but you should be getting...
So, we would do a single round if it was less than four, is what you're saying?
Well, no, because you could potentially have two people with two, but then you would do the runoff on that. I guess if you stagnate, then you, then you're going to have to figure that out as it comes through, but...
I think the goal here would be to eliminate the fact that we could run into a tie and have an impasse. I think that's what the vote process is probably going to eliminate, I think, hopefully.
Well, there's always a goal to make it as streamlined as possible, but I think unfortunately, this process is still going to run into issues that we can't predict. So, I, I do agree that the idea of setting a cap as to where we go over and then if there's a need, I think the stipulation is if we end up with a 2-2 and we need to go to the next round, what would we do to break a 2-2 in the second round if that occurs? So, that, that again, then plays out if that need occurs. So, if we're trying to line that all out tonight, is one of the reasons why I asked, maybe we bring it back on the 18th, because this is, as you say, potentially a game theory. And I absolutely think this needs to be transparent and we need to know the parameters by which those votes are cast and how we go about casting those. So, my personal preference would be for us to consider that and come back on the 18th when we're reviewing the application process and finalize the discussion about the voting process.
This is on December 18th, is that correct?
A regular council meeting. And this agenda item will come back because the application will be presented to us to...
Basically, we'll just know the number of applicants, so we can...
We won't know the number of applicants on the 18th.
Because that's January 3rd or something like that, right?
That's January 8th.
January 8th, okay.
Yeah. So, my motion would be that we table the voting process till the December 18th meeting when we have the discussion about the application process.
I'll support that with a second. I think that's, that's a good way to do it.
City manager?
I was just going to say, is there anything we can do to help the process? It's between now and the 18th because, you know, we can continue this conversation through that. You can take time to think about it. We can try and gather any information.
Councilmember Mosby.
Maybe you guys could figure out some of other communities have done to give us some options, especially on the variance, if we're looking at, you know, less than four or more than four or something, that might be the stickler. And then in the, in the potentials of a tie, if you're sitting at the lower volume, what are some options there that we can...
Right. Anytime any panel has an even number, there's always an opportunity.
Yeah. Councilmember Vega, did you have a question or...
Just one more question here, if I could. City attorney, put you on the spot again, Jeff. Okay, these two votes and versus just a majority vote, looking for the most transparent way. And I think you probably explained it already, that it's going to eliminate some sort of stagnation, but maybe you could clarify through your legal experience where, again, we're going to go back to numbers on how many applicants. Like you said, we could go one single round by majority. We could just appoint. So, we have a couple of things.
I can't say that having two votes each is going to eliminate the possibility of a tie because obviously, two of you could use all your votes for one person, and then the other two could use all their votes for another person, and then you have a tie whether you each get two votes or whether you each get one vote. But I think it's probably true that if you increase the number of votes that each of you get, it may help to avoid a tie. But that is something that we can think about between now and December 18th and maybe bring you back some options, maybe that other communities have done.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
And as something bringing back as well, that maybe something on a point system where the person has the, you know, the one chip, two chip, three chip, four chip, and then they place them in there, then you vote totals, run with a total...
A ranking type of...
Ranking type thing or something might. I guess with your motion, with just adding on staff's recommendation, coming back on that same timeframe.
To come back with more options, is that what you're asking for? Okay.
Yeah. So, it's been moved and seconded that when the application is brought back on December 18th for council to approve, they will also bring us a sampling of voting processes that we can then finalize and have a couple of alternate in case we need to think about breaking a tie. Okay, that is the motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. Vote, wait.
Oh, sorry, real quick.
City manager.
On the questions, if, just to be clarified, if you can send them to myself and to Stacy just so we have a, we know where they're going. I didn't put that on here of who to send them to.
We can do that. All right, let's vote. And that passes for zero. All right. Thank you all for being here and being a part of the discussion. It has been my goal as I ran that we improve our communication with the public and that we represent you better. So, this, I believe, is a good step forward. I want to continue to see all of you present at council. I encourage you to participate. This is your community. So, thank you for being here. After the adjournment, please join us in the reception, for a reception in the lobby to talk to each of us, share insight. So, I will adjourn this meeting. Yes.
Sorry, one more. I'm going to plug it.
Absolutely.
This Saturday, we're going to be starting 8:30 to 9. We'll have some coffee and donuts in this room. And then from 9 to, we have it planned to noon, we'll be doing a financial update for the council because they're now newly seated. We're going to sort of go through a, where were we, where are we currently in the budget and what does next year look like? So, it sort of gives the council an idea of what the budget process is going to be. So, I invite everybody to be here. It will be on TAP TV, it'll be on the radio and whatnot, but we will be here 9 to 12.
And anyone who's interested in applying for the position, I highly recommend you either attend and or watch or listen to it so that you are aware of the situation you will be applying to deal with for the next two years. So, we will adjourn to a reception in the lobby at the conclusion of this meeting. So, I formally adjourn our meeting. The Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 6:30 PM on December 18th. Thank you so much.[1764.73][1764.73][music]